Good afternoon, Father Creator of heaven and earth. We first want to say thank you. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for going to the cross and bearing our sins. Lord, we give you so many accolades just for that, God, that you look down on us to save us, Father. Lord, we ask that as we go into this meeting that you help us to be stewards of what is best for our county. We ask you all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to come speak to us about anything? All right, see no movement, we'll go on to the appointment. And we have Mr. Danny Hoover here with the Tiff County Disability and Aging Board of Independence.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everyone doing today?
Good.
Got a little handout for you that will be a small test at the end. Don't worry, you know, it's no big deal, right?
Open book.
Open book, right?
My answer says, "I don't doubt."
It's our results, right? I'm with you on that. All right, so I really appreciate you guys giving us some time today. So I wanted to let you guys know kind of what I do first in what Diversified Enterprises is before I get started. So you already have a copy. Just in case, you and I talk a little bit about this.
I'm screwing myself up to an ancient joke.
All right, so Diversified Enterprises has been providing services for disabilities, for people with disabilities in Tifton and the greater area for now fifty-four years. So we have, we have been trying to increase our advocacy efforts here in Tiff County and in the state and in the nation. So what we would like to do now is to focus a little more on the local area. So to do that, what we'd like to do is create a board that would report to you guys. And that board would be, would comprise of nine citizens of Tiff County. So what we are proposing is for three of those participants to have an intellectual or developmental disability. And then three of those participants to be in the, what we would categorize as the aging population, which, you know, apparently I'm in that population now. And then three people that are in the profession. So there would be nine members on the board. There will, and basically what the, what that, what they would do is they would meet monthly and then they could answer any questions about the things that the county commissioners are proposing to, to do in the county and how it might impact people with disabilities or the aging population. I have talked to a couple of folks. I talked to one lady from the Office of Aging. And then I've also talked to someone from the Leroy Rogers Center. And they've also, they've said that the aging population oftentimes gets overlooked. And there's some similarities between the aging population and people with disabilities because both, both of those groups of people typically live on fixed incomes that are based on lots of times government incomes. And, and not always, but that is kind of where they come from. And then also that the access to public facilities and that sort of thing can be limited. And that's why I have limited transportation leads. And sometimes they are institutionalized into nursing homes or other facilities where their rights are restricted even further. So, so since those populations have similarities, we thought combining the two, because we are, although we are mighty here in Tiff County, we're still somewhat small. So we were thinking about adding those two together and just seeing if we could have those folks get together and then report to you guys and to the city council. So you guys are the first place that we came. And then our next step is go to the city council because we'd like to, to let folks know how some of the things are, how things are impacting those two populations. And we're not asking for any grants, we're not asking for any money, we're not asking for you guys to do any appointments. Now, some of the bylaws that we have looked into do include some appointments by county commissions and our city councils. But at this point, we're not asking for that because we would just ask for community members at large and business leaders at large. And then as we move forward, if we see that it is an effective use of ti, of your time and effort and energy and the city council's time, effort, and energy, would it be something that either body would be interested in appointing members to? So in a nutshell, when I'm asked Chairman McBrayer about this, he said it would be best to come here and answer any questions because you guys might have questions.
Do we have any questions?
How often will they come?
They would come quarterly. So meet monthly and then come here quarterly unless there was some specific need that the, that the commissioners needed for, for the board to answer more quickly than that.
How will you select the members of the board?
So we would ask for volunteers at large. So we would ask for, and then we most likely at the beginning just start with a lottery.
So the man will be reviewing what we do and let us, give us feedback on how, what we decide to fit them? Or will they be coming to us with asks of things that we need to do for this?
There would be a combination of both. So what I'm, what I'm envisioning is if they have issues with accessing a county building, then, then they may bring that to you guys. If there is a housing issue, which we all know, if there's a housing issue and how, how their needs might be met.
Mr. Chairman, I think, so, and I just, you and I talked and I, and I just kind of tried to read through this and listen at the same time. But what, what is it that you need from the commissioners now? Do you need a letter of support? Are you asking for a resolution? I mean, other than come in and, and give them information, is there anything that you need that this commission that would help you start this process?
So I think a letter of support would be, would be the beginning. And then that way we would know that there would be some type of authority or blessing from the commissioners. Because if we ran a board and you guys don't care what they say, it does no, it would do no good. So, and I know you all would always, always care.
We do have the perfect candidate for your aging board.
Aging and deterioration.
Well, and that's, that's the beauty of this building. We're all welcome right now. Everybody's welcome.
If the board don't have any, any more questions, I mean, of course, this is not on the agenda. The chairman is, is an item for action. And that's something we can, you know, we can put together and have it back in front of y'all for the main meeting.
The main meeting, yeah. Is everybody fine with that?
Will that work? You, we put something together? Put it together for you and then we'll get that to you.
And I'd be glad to come back and, because you may not have, you have, may have further questions later. I mean, it's program five minutes.
What we'll do is we, we'll reach out to you and put together this, this letter. And, and then, and of course, everybody will see it. So when we come back to the main meeting, everybody will kind of be up to speed on what it's going to say and what it's going to do. And what, a little more clarity on what the involvement is, that kind of stuff. We can work through that.
I have proposed bylaws. I can sort of consider that you be able to email that way, good kind of guide how, how that letter will be.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dan. All right, we also have Mr. Carmichael here to talk to us about our audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and, you know, give you some feedback on the county's audit for June 30, 2022. And I believe all of you have the handout that I'm sort of going to be talking from. Before I kind of jump into that, I do want to just express our thanks to Diane, Jim, and your management team and the help that, and their team specifically, that, you know, helped us in getting through this process. There's a lot of information that we, we asked for, a lot of details we get to and dig down into. So we, we appreciate all that they do and, you know, and helping us complete this thing. In terms of, you know, deliverables, really, really three things that we're touching. The audited, the opinions and your audited financial statements. There's a required communications document. And then, of course, this presentation. Of course, the financial statements and that required communication documents, they've been completed. They've been submitted where they need to be. I believe Diane is planning to circulate those in the next week or so. But so just want to kind of go through that process. So from page two, to really kind of give you an overview, you know, I want to just tell you a little bit about our firm, talk about the audit approach. Going to touch a little bit on the general fund, talk about the s lost and special revenue funds. Give you a little bit of information on your pension plan. And then, you know, kind of wrap up with just some high level numbers for your capital assets, your long-term debt. And I'll get into a little more detail on the required communications document, sort of what it is and why it's important. And then certainly have, you know, some, some room at the end for questions. But I'd like for it to be a dialogue. So if anything comes up as we're going through, please, you know, let's just stop and try to address it then. If I can't get you an answer now, I'll certainly, you know, get to the detail that I need to and can bring that back to you. But moving to page three, you know, Carr Riggs and Ingram. We've been blessed over the last ten or so years since we merged in with Carr Riggs and Ingram. We're now the twenty-second largest firm in the country. We're serving twenty-five markets in ten states. And, you know, there's a lot of other big numbers on there, I won't bore you with those. But the important thing is that we have the resources so that if an issue or something that we need, you know, that we maybe have not seen here locally, we have people that only do governmental work full-time. That's all they do. You know, we all at some of the biggest counties in, certainly in Florida, over in Alabama, based our whole footprint here. So I talked a little bit about our audit approach. It's referred to as a risk-based audit approach. It's the cascade of sarbanes oxley. Y'all have heard me say that every year I come in here, but I always want to make that point. You know, some bad guys within Ron and WorldCom got all that started twenty years ago. And when the SEC reacted as to what a publicly traded company had to do, where are we at twenty years later? Everybody has to do it that way. But so those standards, you know, what they require us as auditors to do is to understand the entity that we're, we're auditing, whether it be internal risks or external risks, to, you know, to perform rigorous risk assessments, understand what those risks are. And then for us to provide linkage in our work paper to the risks that we identified versus the work that we did. So when I talk about understanding the internal controls, I mean, we're evaluating how they're designed and then we're performing walkthroughs on those controls. And what I mean by that is taking a transaction literally from the day it's authorized all the way to it being posted actually in the financial statements. And then we're looking at, you know, going through that process helps us to determine whether it's been implemented. We're not necessarily expressing an opinion on your internal control structure, but we have to have that, that level of understanding. When we look at risk assessment, we're going to always consider economic conditions. Revenue recognition by our standards is always considered a high-risk area. For any government that we work with, accounts payable cutoff and compliance with laws and regulations are also going to be an important risk area for us to see. So then in terms of what our response is to those risks, you know, we actually perform detailed testing of your accounts receivable, how you're recognizing revenue in the financial statements. We're looking for unrecorded liabilities. And what I mean by that is, you know, a lot of times there can be timing issues. You know, you may close the books August the fifteenth, an invoice may not make its way here, you know, until September. Usually if those things happen, it's not some significant dollar amount, but we are looking and testing for those type items. Then we obviously do compliance testing on your sales tax expenditures. And then we go in and do some limited testing on journal entries where we identify what we consider the more risky journal entries to be and then, you know, look at the documentation for those. So moving to page seven, kind of dive into the numbers here for just a little bit. So this is a presentation of, of just the general fund for the county. And you can see, I'm not going to go over every number here, but I've lined up the 2022 versus 2021 actual. And you can see, you know, for 2022, you actually wound up with a surplus of $388,000. Compared to last year, it was about 5.6 million, but a lot of that had to do with the ARC money that was flowing in at that point. So you, you take that $388,000, add it to your beginning fund balance, that leaves you with a fund balance of $30,545,000 at the end of the year. And I'll touch on that number in a little bit in more detail in just a few slides over. So kind of working your way down into the revenues. Again, this is the same number that's on that first sheet, but I'm just comparing actual versus budget. Of course, you can see your property taxes came in over budget, so did the lost proceeds. Your charges for services, that million forty-five thousand dollars, that was primarily the result of increased service fees from the ambulance department and your prisoner housing made up the bulk of that, of that, that variance. And when I say variance, a positive variance. Your court fines and fees were actually about $209,000 below what you had budgeted. And the biggest piece of that was the traffic court was down about $209,000. All the other courts and fines were up, but that netted to $209,000 variance there. Then you take all your other revenue sources. Of course, according to this presentation here, it's showing that you were $4.2 million under budget. Well, that's because you budgeted a deficit of $4.6 million. When you go through that budget process and you're budgeting to use prior year reserves, in effect, that's what you're doing, you're budgeting loss. But to present to the state, you have to show that as a revenue line item so that your budget is in balance. So really, you know, if you, if you think about preparatively budgeted actual, I mean, you came in with a surplus of $388,000, you were budgeting a loss of $4.6. So it's much bigger swing there in a positive manner. Moving to page nine, just going to dive into the expenses again. Again, your actual expenditures, $31,582 versus budgeted of $33,169. Just sort of, you know, going there, your general government, that was primarily, you know, your $321,000 below budget. That was $165,000 was on your commissioner's line, $61,000 related to buildings, and then $51,000 related to the tax commissioner. In the court system, that $170,000, roughly a hundred and seven of that was attributed to the DA being under budget on expenditures. And public safety were primarily three areas that make up that $710,000. The EMS was $245,000 under budget, jails $113,000, and the sheriff's department was $135,000 below budget. And then, of course, your public works department, again, a million five under budget there. You know, the presentation here, those line items actually for capital outlay and debt service, you, you weren't $976,000 over budget there. The budget related to those items is actually buried in those other departments. It should have really been brought down to reflect netting against that $976. And then the same thing for the, for the debt service. So, you know, I mentioned your, your fund balance. You know, and I get asked a lot, well, what kind of fund balance should we be carrying? Well, I mean, every county or any municipality would be different for each one because of whatever your, you know, your strategic goals and, or such may be. But generally, if you were to ask somebody from the Carl Vincent Institute at, at the University of Georgia, they're going to tell you somewhere between three and six months. So I always like to show this graph here because I told you you had $30.6 million in fund balance, but you got to remember that's at the end of June, you know. And, and will the, will the county, when is the majority of your revenues recognized? All your property tax money comes in December and January. So really, you know, you're, that 30.6 million, you're burning through probably 2.6 million a month in expenditures with, with very little revenue coming in in those months because it's been sort of front-loaded. So I'd just like to show that, you know, you have 30.6 million, but it's not there all the time. Probably your lowest point from a fund balance perspective would be the month of November before those property tax revenues start coming in pretty strong. And, you know, I couldn't say without alternate, but certainly if you just say, because it's going to be five months of burning 2.6 million, you could expect that fund balance to be down 13 or 14 million dollars. So that's still a pretty strong position, but I'd just like for everybody to know that it's not just a static number that, that sits there. So moving off the general fund on to page 11, those are just your restricted fund balances. Just like you'd always know what those are. So there's $23 million in reserve, 11.9 million related to the 2019 s lost, 1.4 million to T's lost, 7.5 related to the, to the ARC fund. And then the, the total for all your other non-major special revenue funds is 2.9 million. And of course, as you know, those money, those monies either by statute or referendum are restricted to what they can be used for. Moving to page 12, just a snapshot of the pension plan. You can see that, you know, I know y'all made some pretty large contributions over the last year. So you have to remember the timing's a little different with this pension plan. It's measured like at December 31st. But that just gives the actuaries the time they need to go through whatever it is they do to come up with those numbers. But anyway, you can see year over year that, you know, you had a net pension liability in June 21 of 11-6. That number's came down to $2.5 million. And it's a combination of, you know, the actuarial calculation they do, you know, some heavier contributions that the county has made, and then, you know, some return on investments as well. Page 13 is just a snapshot of the county's capital assets. You know, that's just, your assets carried at cost. That's not a depreciated number, it's not been adjusted for any fair market value. You know, there's, but that's what you're carrying as, that's the cost of what you've acquired over the years in your financial statements. So about 187 million in your governmental activities, and then on that business activity, 122,000. Page 14 is just a snapshot of the county's debt. And, you know, really composed of three items. Your lease liability this year was about 3.6 million. Compensated assets is 888,000, which is just your accounting for, you know, your vacation pay, those type things. And then, of course, the net pension liability that we just, we just discussed. The, the large increase in that lease liability is primarily the result of the, the accounting standards were changed, the way that leases were accounted for. There used to be the distinction between what was considered a financing lease versus an operating lease. No such thing, any kind of lease gets booked as debt now. So there was a one-time adoption at the beginning of the year, which is why that went up so significantly. So that sort of covers the numbers that I wanted to go through. You know, page 15, you know, I mentioned our required communications document. Again, that is our formal communication with you, you know, in addition to our audit opinions, which are included in the audit report. And it's basically just intended to cover the auditor's responsibility, what the significant estimates and disclosures in the financial statements are. I like to consider to some degree a roadmap to the financial statements for a user. The corrected and uncorrected journal entries that we determine and, and propose as part of our audit, they're listed out and there for you to see. If there were any other issues deemed significant to the board's oversight of reporting, we would report them there. That comment there, the restatement, that was a carryover from last year's presentation, so that should not have been in there. But obviously, there's, there's nothing we think needs to be reported to you. We certainly have communicated it here in addition to this document. If there were any difficulties that we encountered or any disagreements, obviously, we would, you know, be required to formally communicate them to you in that document. So with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to try to address them.
Any questions? So basically, we're in good shape.
I would say you are.
Sir, would you like a few?
They do, they certainly do.
All right, Tom, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Okay, now we'll move on to our minutes. We have a work session on March 7th, executive session on March 7th, record session March 13th, executive session March 13th, and call session on March 23rd. We have a motion to approve.
Sue.
The second, or the third? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, now we have three different public hearings tonight. Six point one is TZ-ZA-23-03. Thanks.
Now we have TCZA-2303 petition made by CNK Properties LLC owner. They submitted a rezon application for the property located at 1706 Whitten Mill Road, tax amount 00463, parcel 72. This is, if you remember back a few years ago, we rezoned the property that's adjacent to this for Mr. Coons. He had proposed to build his real estate office there. He has since then purchased the property that was decided and has an existing structure on it. Mr. Coons has wished now him and his firm to make that his real estate office and use where he's already had for parking or for other use. This is contiguous to the zoning. The property is currently zoned R21. He's proposed to go to RP Residential Professional, which, like I said, is contiguous to along Whitten Mill Road on the county side. Most of those properties down through there are now offices of some sort, whether it be real estate or insurance or engineering firms out of that way as well. The comprehensive plan shows it as a mixed use there. We presented it to the planning commission on March 9, 2023. No one was here to speak in opposition. Since posting the property and running ads in the paper, we've not handled any phone calls in opposition. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions concerned with rezoning.
Another one didn't make it hard on me?
Pretty cut and dry. Pretty cut and dry. One of you, one of you was cut and dry.
Any questions?
Thank you, board.
All right. We'll open this matter to a public hearing. This gives everybody an opportunity to maybe, I would be for or against the sound request to speak. So at this time, with the public hearing being opened, we'd ask that anyone that has commented first of all for or in support of the application to step forward.
Good evening, my name is Nelson Coons. I'm owner of Coons Real Estate Appraisals and also the co-owner of CNK Properties with my wife.
Can you give us an address, Mr. Coons?
For?
Whichever one you, or the email.
My post office box is 7711 here in Tifton, 7173. So this property is residential dwelling. The owner passed, well, a year or two ago, and his son sold it to me. I'm in the process of cleaning up the outside and plan to have like six offices in there. And we'll put some parking in the front. I brought a little sketch, it's a little bit hard to see, but I'm taking in the garage and I'm going to put a little drop box on the side. And then my intention will be in the rear, property is left that way. I do have a, to my west, a wooded area that I'll probably keep for a while wooded. Haven't met with the neighbors and everybody on board with what I want to do that joins in. And I hadn't heard any buzz about any opposition and that, that was pretty particular. So I think they're blessing my wishes, so to speak. And, you know, I want to be a good neighbor and I plan to be there for a long time. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Nelson.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone here, anyone else speak in behalf of the application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. Chairman, if there are no opposition, we will close the public hearing. At this time, I'll hold the board and direct this question to each of you. Are there any board members that have either personally, family, or any business interest that may have a financial interest in the outcome or any decision related to this application? If you do, then please so declare a conflict of interest. Let the record reflect, Madam clerk, that there are no conflict of interest. This matter is ready for action, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And so we'll open the floor for a nomination.
I'll make a nomination that we grant the request to rezon from R21.
A move, a move, a move. I'm sorry, I misspoke, a move, a motion.
Am I good to go there?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Grant the request to rezon from R21 to RP Residential Professional.
All right, I have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Excuse me. All right, and let's move here to TC TA 23-03.
As I presented board in our work session, this is just a little house cleaning in our Zonal List in Chapter Two concerning concrete batch plants, whether they be permanent or portable. We had asked the board to consider changing subsection 2-0303 capable uses to make. to make whole, uh, I'm sorry, make concrete batch plants as a use by right in WLI and HI zoning districts with some supplemental standards. The supplemental standards, y'all reviewed. We made a slight change after me and the clerk reviewed some other documentation that we already had. One of the supplemental standards we asked to do was extra buffers. It's already a pretty intense buffer requirement in there already. So we have actually scratched that one from there and asked the board to consider adopting this ordinance with property, with these supplemental standards. Property lots must be directed to the inside of the property. Hours of operation shall be between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., minimum five acre parcels, and must be located on an arterial road.
What is the intense buffer that's already included?
Uh, I think we've looked at it's 30 feet from any residentially zone. So any, we do have some WLI in the county that abuts a residential district, and along those areas, there would be a 30-foot buffer between them and the WLI. So you're talking about 30 feet into somebody's...
It had a wall or...
And it does require fans. And it does require a solid fence. But like I say, you're going 30 feet into the building property.
Okay, any questions?
All right. Push again. We'll open this up for a public hearing. For anyone that has any comments or text amendment that's been addressed by my staff, anybody to speak to this issue in any way, please come forward. If there are no comment, we'll close the public hearing. And although a little unusual, I just would address the board again. Is there any of you that would have any financial benefit or financial, positive financial impact by changing this text amendment as has been requested? Let the record reflect, there are no response, and that there are no conflicts of interest.
All right, we're opening the floor for a motion.
And, Mr. Chairman, this will be as resolution 2305. If the motion is to grant, it will be to approve resolution 2305.
All right, motion to approve resolution 2305. Sub move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Making sure I didn't need to give somebody a chance to vote. All right, third public hearing for TC TA 23-02. Chris again.
This is the last one. So also just keeping in track with the one we just done, asphalt plants are not mentioned in our table of uses. We felt like we are addressing concrete plants, we needed to address the asphalt plants. Because they're using petroleum products, we asked that we change section 2 dash, or 2.10, 3.00 in the land use table, line out 5.33 with Tiff County Unified Development include to include asphalt plants. Right now, I just said anything using petroleum products, stuff like, we wanted to specifically say asphalt plants are only allowed in HI.
Thank you. All right, it's correct.
All right. We will open up the public hearing to receive any comment as relates to the song text amendment provided by my staff. So at this point, if anyone wants to speak to this text amendment as described or has any comment, please come forward. If there are no responses, Mr. Chairman, we'll close the public hearing. And at this point, I'll address the board and ask that if any of you or your family members or businesses have any financial interest in the outcome of the decision regarding this text amendment, please so declare. Let the record reflect, there are no conflicts of interest. It's ready for action, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Once again, we're opening the floor for motions.
And this will be resolution 202306.
Sub move. All right, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, we move on to the consent agenda. Item 7.1, motion to approve criminal justice coordinating council grant awarded amount of $2,406 from Tiff County DUI drug court. 7.2, motion to approve criminal justice coordinating council grant awarded amount of $4,325 for the Tiff County Adult Family Drug Court. 7.3, motion to approve E&amp;Rs for the tax commissioner as presented. 7.4, motion to approve contract with Eaton for UPS maintenance in the amount of $9,361. 7.5, motion to approve resolution number 2023-04 surplus equipment. 7.6, motion to approve addendum to agreement with the Watkinson Associates for the FY23 LMIC project, where cost of $19,040 to be funded from Splat 6. 7.7, motion to issue a notice of award to Reeves Construction for FY23 LMIC resurfacing project and authorize the chairman to execute the construction contract in amount of $1,395,684 to be funded from LMIC and Splat 6. 7.8, motion to approve resolution number 2023-03 comprehensive plan update adoption. Does any commissioner want to move any items to be considered seniorly relevant on the consent agenda? Here are none who have a motion to approve consent agenda.
Sub move.
All right, commissioner, we have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Astro, second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I just wanted to note that on the E&amp;Rs writing off for the tax commissioner, the total would be written off as $11,754 in ADX.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, now we'll move again. All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, regular agenda, we have 8.1, ordinance number 2023-03 animal control ordinance amendments.
Mr. Carter. Mr. Chairman, as we talked about in the executives, I mean, I'm sorry, the workshop, proposed amendment to the animal control ordinance and includes addition of two definitions and, and the addition of a change of section, well, sorry, not change, but the addition of section 1421.1 regulating grazing and fording of animals. And just to kind of cover the two definitions, there are two. One is the definition of forage, which means food for animals, especially when taken by browsing or grazing. And then the definition for grazing, which means an animal foraging, feeding or any grass or other growing herbage. And then the mended section, which is chapter 14 of animals, article one, division two, comes on down and says, shall be unlawful for any person to allow any animal to graze or forage food on or about the streets, highways, public rights away, owned or maintained by county slash city, or own property of another person without permission of the owner of that property, or the person in possession of that property. And as we discussed, this would, you know, whether it be whatever kind of animal, goats, chickens, horses, cows, whatever, they have to forage, you know, in a pasture that's contained and actually under supervision of the owner and not in the public right of way or on somebody else's property.
All right, any questions? All right, we have a motion.
Sub move.
All right, Mr. Wood, second?
Second.
Mr. Wood, second. All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Carter, any other comments?
Master, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any.
You have an announcement.
If I look a little tired, as we discussed at the last work session, I did not think I'd be here tonight. My daughter, my oldest daughter was scheduled to have a C-section at about noon today. She calls about 2:45 Saturday morning and said her water broke, so our whole planned out, we're going to have a second grandbaby, turned into a little bit of a blessed weekend.
Nice Easter weekend.
I'm just, I'm a little, I'm a little tired, but, uh, everything, mom is good, baby's good, daddy's good, Pop-Pop's a little bit tired, but everything's good, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rawl. Okay. Mr. Wood?
Good.
Mr. Astro?
Mr. Rigdon?
Mr. Stone?
Mr. Mr. Hee?
What?
I do have something.
Ma'am, you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Donna Ingram. I am the program coordinator for the Adult Family Drug Court. I apologize for not being here last week. I didn't know I was supposed to be here.
We talked about your bag.
We gave you a lot of grace.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for introducing yourself. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
We have...
Hey, you send this, does DM, you send it to...
The ball?
Yeah. There's a...